We'll have the invocation of Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Chris Smith. Would you please stand?
May we pray? Holy Father, thank you for this wonderful day that you allowed us to see. Thank you for rest on last night. Thank you, Father, for your grace and your mercy. Thank you for all the benefits that you continue to load us with. Lord, we pray for those who serve. We thank you for the honor of serving. We thank you for those citizens who are here to participate in government. We ask that you bless and keep them. Lord, give us direction to do the things that are beneficial to those we serve. In the name of Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff, you left the Celtics out on that one.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery, absent. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Freen?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Counsel, would you approve today's agenda?
So move. Second.
Any comments about today's agenda from the audience? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Smith?
It finally came up.
Okay. Machine carries.
Okay, today we have another public hearing. First, we'll listen to introduce Mr. Gary Joyner again, talking about the two options. Mr. Gary?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yes, I'll get the base and all of it. It's on.
Do you want to start with the five districts or the seven?
Yes, let's start with five. This is the second of two public hearings on the redistricting plan for Bossier City. And I want to remind you that they are not voting today. This is just laying out the two primary options. And then after they, after input, and we certainly want your input, then they will vote for one of the two options.
And then later on, they'll come back and have to pass the ordinance for the option that we chose.
Right. So there's no, there's nothing set in stone today. Every 10 years, the United States recounts itself through the census. And then after that is processed, it usually takes about a year. This time, it was more than 18 months because of COVID. The data comes out, at least population data. They're still processing economic data. Some of that's out, but not all of it. So using the 1965 Voting Rights Act, particularly Section 2 of that act, that is the Bible for what we do. So here's the, the simple math version of it. For any plan that has geographic boundaries, which Bossier has five, so you're seven-member council, you've got five geographic, and you've got two at-large. There's 20 or so municipalities in the state of Louisiana that have over 20, 10,000 people, 10,000.
10,000?
That have at-larges. So it's, it's perfectly normal to do it. It's really up to what each municipality says. And with what's called a 5-2 plan, that's in your charter. If they decide with your input again to have seven geographic districts, then there would have to be a change in the charter. You'd have to have a charter commission. It would be, hopefully, a single issue. Was it 18 months, I believe?
18 months, yes, sir.
Is, is the timeline. So with that being said, you take the total population of Bossier City, you divide it by five, and that gives you a theoretical perfect number to go with. As I build plans, I can go 5% over that perfect number or 5% below that perfect number. Can't be anymore, not even one person. I count all people. Now, that sounds sort of dumb when you say it. But remember that anybody under the age of 18 is a minor and cannot vote, which means that I can't use anything that would be registered voters, because it can change by the minute. It can change by the hour. And right now, we're two years into the next decade, and I have to be able to use only 2020 census data. So a question came up at the first meeting that we had, and I want to explain this again. The Census Bureau sets up its own maps, okay? And these maps, inside the colored areas within Bossier City, have boundaries that are visible. Now, if you're in a tight area where she's going, you'll see the streets. Streets are boundaries. The only non-visible boundary is the corporate limits. Can't use anything that's not visible except for corporate limits. So if the Census Bureau shows railroad lines, I can use it. If they show streams, I can use it. River, of course, the boundary to it. But we can't go beyond the corporate limits. We have to stay inside them. When we are in the southern portion of Bossier City, you were great where you were. Right in here, you can see how thin it is going down the federal highway and picks up the, the lower area. You're great. Picking up the, the lower subdivision, we have to stay inside that line. The red dots on here, red squares, are where incumbents live. And you can see that with, with the current situation with a 5-2, we have two council members that are almost neighbors. It's just the way it occurs. The districts are all color-coded. And in every plan that I build, I use the same colors for each district so that you can see the changes within them. The pink area, Barksdale, of course, is included. Now, there's something that is, that happens in every city that has a military base. Barksdale has both on-base and off-base housing. They have allowances for it, particularly off the North Gate. Lot of apartments where people live. Do they vote? Yes, they are typically very patriotic, and they do vote. Do they vote here? By and large, no. Because as they are assigned here, unless they're in TDY, Temporary Duty, they vote at home, and they absentee vote. So who is, whoever is in District 2 sort of gets a bye because of those people who are here but really don't count. In effect, they become in the same way as minors, people under 18. As we move north, you'll see where the growth is in the city, both of those districts, four and five. The census, I think everybody, everybody that we've talked to, even the census yesterday came out and admitted that they did an undercount. And they blamed it on COVID, and I'm sure they're right. And there was somebody here at the last meeting, I think, who, who, it may have been a personal conversation, but they're saying they didn't have everything counted because there was no way to get to the people. They went out, and they told them they were there, and the census people never came back. A lot of it was done by mail because of COVID. So nationwide, the Census Bureau says that there's about a 3% undercount, and I think that's very optimistic. Y'all grew much more than 1,800 people. So that's the five-member plan. Let's go to the seven. Now, if you have seven geographic districts and know at-large, you take the whole population of Bossier City, and then you divide it by seven. And each district loses around 3,000 people because of that, that change. I don't use the same numbers on the seven because they are, it, it wouldn't matter. I would just have 1 through 5 plus 6 and 7. But they're not going to be exactly in the same place. With seven, you, you don't have something like a tiger stripe. So four sits at the bottom, and the numbers can be changed if they go to a seven. But four sits at the bottom, three's on top of that, five is, is going to be the base, two and one are where we're going to spend some time talking. And then at the top, you have six and seven, and they are the, the high-growth areas. Now, we want to spend some time on one and two. Bossier City, if you go into seven, the primary reason for wanting to do a seven-member plan is that there would be two minority districts, ideally, with racial and ethnic numbers within the population. Okay. I did two tests that were pretty telling. The first test, I want to look at black population. And I ran a test where I looked at every single census block that has one more black person than a white person. It's, it's very straightforward. I did the same thing for Hispanics, because just looking at the numbers without seeing geography, it looks like there could be a Hispanic sub-district. There's not, because their Hispanic population here is spread out very, very thinly. So that went away. It's still there, but you, you have to acknowledge that they're there. There's not enough Asian population. There's almost no Asian Pacific Islanders, which surprised me a little bit because of the base. I separate out Hispanics up front. Some demographers don't like to do that. I think it's dangerous not to do that. So I have 300 variables that I work with. I don't use all of them in this, but there are 300 that are available. So I start with Hispanics. And then I do non-Hispanic white, non-Hispanic black, non-Hispanic Asian, other, 18-plus in all of those. And we can even count households and residences that are unoccupied, that kind of thing. And I usually do that to show whether a district is healthy or not. But by using Hispanics up front, and then I can, I can really see what the variations are. All of that explains the next thing. Look at District 2. District 2 would, would be the traditional minority-majority, meaning black majority, district. It's not. It's right at 50/50. And the pink area in this, District 1, is the minority district. So I'm glad I don't have to vote. It's up to them. It's not up to me. If you go with a, a 5-2, you're going to have roughly, with different lines, but you're going to have the same type of makeup that you would have now. If you go to a seven-member plan, you cannot build two minority districts. And depending on who runs, you know, I think everybody should vote for the person and not the party, but that's just me. I think you could end up with a retrograde. You could end up with six white districts, one black district. Or you could end up with seven white districts. It just depends on how many people come out to vote and who they want to vote for. Now, one thing you have to do in the census, working with the census, is you are not allowed to project 10 years out. You have to do it based on what the census says this decade. So you would, if you go to a seven-member plan, and I'm not saying don't do it, but if you do, you will have one and a half minority districts. 10 years, you'll probably have two. But there's no way to tell. One of the things that always comes up in discussions is, well, if it's trending that way, why can't you just go ahead and plan for it? Well, okay, let's say that we plan for it, and we think we've got two minority districts. And the city annexes to the north with the new subdivisions, overwhelmingly white, upper-middle class, I would say. Every time you annex a subdivision, let's say, and it's got 500 people in it, and they're all white, then you sublimate or you reduce the black voting strength. Some cities now are stopping annexing, not only because of the cost of doing the services that you have to have, water, sewer, police, fire, to protect those people. They don't want to see the risk. And so they're, they're stopping it. Bossier, could you pull out so we could look at, at the whole city for once? That's great. Barksdale, think about it, in the middle, squeezes toward the river. The river stops you. Barksdale stops you. So Bossier City is shaped roughly like a dumbbell with a big bulb at the bottom and a big bulb at the top, and you're not going to do anything in the middle. There's no place to grow. So if that occurs, the minority population, the bulk of it, is right in the bar of that dumbbell. And you have to think about what's going to happen to it if the city grows. Now, if it's natural growth, let's say that you have new apartments being built, and they're inside the city limits, that's one thing. That's, that's legitimate growth. But if you extend through annexations, that's artificial growth. Does that make sense? It's just, it's, there's a lot of balls in the air when you do something like this. So comes down to, to questions, and really, that's it. Do the citizens of Bossier City want to keep what they've got with a 5-2, or do you want to go to a 7? And it's up to y'all. Like I said, I'm glad I don't have to vote. I just get to explain. Think of me as your taxi driver, you know? I'll get you there, but you have to figure out where you're going first. So this is a listening session. Have you got any questions? Don't all jump up at once. Yes, sir?
Kerry Chandler.
Got to come to the mic, please, sir.
Mr. Joyner?
Yes, sir.
My name is Kerry Chandler, 2924 Heather Lane, Bossier City. If we do the 5-2, is that the only way we're going to get a true minority district? Now, I don't mean 50% plus one, but a true minority. Say yes, a 60/40.
Well, whatever the final numbers within it. You will have one minority district under five, and you will have one minority district guaranteed, really, under seven, but not two.
Okay.
The population's just not there yet.
Okay.
But, you know, there, there are cities that have, in the past, tried to anticipate that, and that's why they do plans. And sometimes, not here, I, I've never seen it here, but in Texas, they're having a horrible time trying to get their plans passed as they plan forward for that growth. Well, they're growing, and you can't stop Texas from growing. You just can't do it. In South Texas, particularly south of Austin, we'll say from there to Del Rio and south, it's not uniform, but they're, they're growing like crazy. And they're trying to anticipate some of these, and it's getting them in trouble with the feds.
Okay. Would, would the 5-2, would that satisfy the voting requirements, the 1965 voting requirements?
Both of them will.
Both of them will. But seven, you're going to be more diluted than you would, you'd have one more diluted than you would if you did a 5-2.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Holly Floyd. Do you want to take my address?
Please.
1920 Alfred Lane. I spoke night before last. I'm a proponent of the current that we have. But I did mention that I'm open to change. I just have a couple of questions for maybe the people who are kind of on the fence about it. And I, like, really appreciated your explanation today. It was a little more clear, maybe just because I was a little upset the other night. So I have a question with regard to, I understand the impetus behind this. And I understand what the concern is for the minority to be represented. I guess my question is, because I feel like our city is a little bit unique, and, and although we may seem a little segregated, I don't think it's quite as clear as shown on the map. So there's no guarantee in an area where it's 50/50 that a minority is going to choose to run versus a non-minority.
Correct.
So then you have just eliminated the whole purpose behind doing the redistricting. So I guess my question is, have any of the previous voting records been taken into account, like the voter turnout, or particular, maybe some of the folks, I know there were some NAACP, have there been issues that have been addressed by them and have not been resolved? Or is this just a blanket because of this act, we have to look at these things? And so are any, is any of that being taken into consideration?
Yes, to all of the above.
So you have looked at what the voter turnout was in the proposed areas?
I, I do, however, I'm not allowed to use it.
Only use the census data.
You can only use the census data.
Okay.
Legally.
Well, I guess maybe then my question would be to council, if in their consideration, if they had looked at those things as well. And then my last question, maybe the city attorney, because he addressed it a little bit the other night, is could you elaborate on, if this moves forward, and, and if the vote is that you guys are going to change what we have now, and the charter commission happens, can you speak a little bit to the expense to the taxpayers for that, to the process for it? Is there a guarantee that if that happens, things are going to change, or is it just delaying kind of this discussion that we're having? And that's all my questions. Thank you very much.
I, I can speak to the process of a charter commission. If the city council desires to consider a plan that would fundamentally restructure the electoral districts in the city, that would absolutely require a change to the charter. The five geographical districts plus the two at-large, citywide seats, are all established by charter, and the only way to change it would be by changing the charter. The only way to change the charter is through a charter commission. There are two ways that a charter commission can be called for. One is four votes of the city council and ordinance calling for a charter commission, and that is not subject to a veto by the mayor. That's one of the, probably the only thing I think the mayor is not allowed to veto. The other one is by referendum, so to speak. It is if, if the citizens desire a charter commission, then they, I believe, have to get signatures of, verified signatures of city residents equal to a number of 66%, I believe, or it's either 66 or 33%. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number.
I'll pull it up.
Equal to the number of the votes in the last contested mayoral election. So if a charter commission is successfully called for, then the, the, there's a process by which the members have to be appointed. Ms. Nottingham, who's out in the audience, she is the CAO, she's a mandatory member. The city attorney, a mandatory member. Then the city council gets to nominate certain people, the mayor gets to nominate certain people, and that charter commission is then formed. From the time that it's called for, there is a delay, a delay up to 18 months. Where you get into a real gray area, and I think Dr. Joyner referred to it earlier, is can you limit the issues? What, what does the charter commission consider? And I believe that's going to be up to the vote of the commission. They could consider anything. You know, the mayor can make suggestions, the council can make suggestions. Then that charter commission, working with the council and the mayor, would then basically set the agenda. They would debate what issues they wanted to change with the charter. And the end of that, once, once that is accomplished, then it, it might be one issue, it might be 20 issues. Then, but each of those issues is presented as a local referendum, an election. And depending on how many issues that you have, then, and the election cost and things of that nature, it can be, the last time we had, that the city had a charter, I believe it was back in 2005, I believe there were 10 matters or provisions that were proposed for change. If I'm not mistaken, I'll let the city clerk correct me if I'm wrong, zero out of 10 passed.
Under the first charter commission, zero out of 10 passed. There was a second charter commission, but, and...
And I think maybe one, one, one issue passed. In terms of time and expense, it is expensive. And then you have the cost, all your election cost. I would estimate, you know, an election, a charter election, depending on how many issues are, the printing of the ballots, you know, the poll workers, things, I don't know, I would say, and this is an estimate, estimate only, somewhere in the neighborhood of $150, $200,000, give or take. And I might be lowballing that, because of course, the cost of everything is, as we know, is increasing on a daily basis. So it's a very involved process. It can become a contentious process. And that the history of the city is that it's basically been sort of a useless device. That is, is that nothing has, there has been no fundamental change that I'm aware of that's come out of the two charter, charter commissions and the, and the resulting referendums in the history of the city. But again, that's in the, it's either in the purview of the city council or the citizens.
And it's 33%.
I'm sorry?
It's 33%.
33%.
Of registered voters.
It was either 66 or 33. I was on my thirds. So I believe, off the top of my head, which is always dangerous, there were approximately 11,000 votes cast in the last contested mayoral election. So you would need to get somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,300, 3,500 verified signatures that are, I believe they're confirmed by the registered voters and the Secretary of State. That's one way to get a charter commission, and then, and/or the city council calls for one, they get four votes, and the mayor, of course, cannot veto it. So it's costly, and it's time-consuming, and it's, it is, it's, it's a very, very involved process.
Just one thing I might add, Charles, is, is the mayor gets two nominations, two nominations on the thing, and the city council members each get one.
One. That's, and that's, yeah, certain nomination.
And as per our current city charter, we have to have the, we have to have the maps redrawn at least one year prior to the election.
Next election.
Yes, sir.
That is correct. So if a charter commission were called for today, then you're looking at 18 months. But you can't call, you can't just say, hey, we want a charter commission. You know, we would have to draft an ordinance. We would have to put that on the city council agenda. It would require two readings. It would require two readings, and then it would become effective ten days after publication of, of that ordinance. So, again, the secretary of state, Louisiana, and more importantly, the feds, want to see reapportionment accomplished as quickly as, and the process can be bogged down. And see, and even, and you have eighteen months for the charter commission, for the results of the charter commission to be then presented to the public in a referendum form, which means that you got to put it on an election cycle. Now, if you put it on a special election cycle to comply with the time constraints, then you, you, you know, a single election versus everything else, you split the cost on, in a general election, with the parish, with the state, the city. If it's just city, then we're going to bear all those costs, and then my cost estimate would be grossly inadequate.
Any other question for Mr. Joyner?
Thank y'all for coming out.
I would add this, um, if, if I may, uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
And I'll let Dr. Joyner correct me if I get, as I understand, the nineteen sixty-five Voting Rights Act, the two paramount mandatory concerns are, number one, that your districts must be within five percent population-wise of each other. That's not registered voters, it doesn't distinguish between children and adults. It's population as counted by the last census, the twenty-twenty census. Those are the numbers, and, and you cannot use anecdotal evidence. You can't go down to the U-Haul, uh, you know, place and say, how many people rented U-Hauls and are moving out, you know, to try to change? The, the numbers are what the numbers are, and it has to be within five percent, whether it's seven districts or five geographical districts and two-at-large. That's the number-one primary concern, and the number-two primary concern is, you cannot dilute minority voting strength.
Absolutely.
My concern is, and it's a concern only, is that if you go to a plan that would require seven districts, then you could possibly have another lawsuit, or, you know, a, a lawsuit that says, hey, you have now diluted minority voting strength. You went from five districts with a, uh, with a, one which obviously, but, a minority, uh, minority-majority, I guess I should say, and now you've, now you've added one, which is that not only diluted the existing, um, minority-majority, but fails to create a second minority-majority. So, that's, that, that could be a problem too, and all, these are all things that everybody has to consider.
You're exactly right, everything you said.
We'll close the public hearing portion at two-thirty-five.
Thank you, Phyllis.
We'll still allow for public comments on the actual resolutions when they come up for adoption, and that's in accordance with the Louisiana Open Meetings Law, and we allow four speakers per side, three minutes apiece on those items as they come up.
All right, so, new business.
Adopt a resolution to consider a restructuring of the City of Bossier City, city council electoral districts, requiring a City of Bossier City Charter Commission to fundamentally restructure and said existing electoral districts from existing said districts to seven geographical districts. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Do we have any public comments on the, on this, uh, resolution?
And a vote, and affirmative would move us towards seven districts, and a nay vote would knock this resolution down.
I'll ask one more time. Anybody want to come up and comment?
So, just, just so I'm clear and know, know what we're voting on, uh, if this, if this passes, we'll work on a, a map that we all agree on. If it fails, we'll only work on a five-two map. Is that correct?
Uh, not quite. It is a resolution to move forward with an ordinance that would establish a charter commission.
Okay.
And, but we cannot, there, there's no sense in going forward with a map that includes seven geographical districts. Number one, it has to come out of the charter commission, and number two, it has to be passed by a majority of the vote in the referendum stage. Once all that has occurred, then, again, and we're talking about this timeline crunch, then Dr. Joyner has to come up with proposals, and alternate proposals, for a seven-district deal. But this is only, what you're voting on today is only to direct me to go ahead and draft a proposed ordinance calling for this charter commission.
Any questions, Counsel?
Yeah. Mr. President, I would like to make a statement. History is always important. It reminds us from where we have already come, and sometimes, how far we have come. But history also shines light upon our past and the path we took to come to where we are. When I was elected to the office, uh, by the good people of Bossier City to represent District Two, there was no minority district. There was no minority influence district. It was just Bossier City Council, District Two. In fact, District Two makeup, racial makeup, was more non-minority than minority. I chose to run for public office to serve the people of District Two, not a particular group, but all citizens of Bossier City. As, as public servants, we must always strive to do those things in the best interest of the people who elected us to serve, and to the best of our abilities. It has always been my core belief, to serve others is an honor bestowed upon me by both my God and the good people of Bossier City. The Bible says, whosoever will be great among you, let him be your servant. I admit, my ambition is to be great. Great servant, that is, of the people of Bossier City. Being a public servant does not make me great, but to serve at the wishes of the people is a great honor. I'm confident that those who have served before me, those who served with me, and those who will serve after me, will do so with the same resolve. I'm hopeful that service of people will transcend race and solely focus on human race. That being said, let me be clear. I do not oppose the five-two current plan by which I was elected to serve District Two, nor do I oppose the seven-planned district makeup. Let the record reflect, my vote cast today is not to ensure a personal advantage, but to ensure the people's advantage. I had a campaign slogan, "Your vote is your cho, your voice." I stand by that belief today. I support a charter commission to determine the voice of the people. Therefore, my vote will be in support of giving all citizens the choice for change, should change be the people's wishes. The N L C, that's the National League of Cities, says that large election can weaken the representation of certain groups. In our state, there are several municipalities that have a at-large district, including, but not limited to, New Orleans, DeRidder, Central, and Alexandria. The N L C also says district elections may improve citizen participation. I am pro-citizen participation in government. I am a public servant because of active citizen participation. I took an oath to faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me. It is incumbent upon each of us to give every opportunity for citizen participation. A yes vote cast for Resolution One will be a vote for future citizen participation in government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Counsel, any other comments?
One, one more question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
For the city attorney. All right, so, Resolution Number One is specifically if we want to direct you to call a charter commission.
What, to draft an ordinance?
Draft an ordinance.
Calling for a charter commission.
Call for a charter commission. If, if this ordinance fails, does it prevent us from ever drafting an ordinance for a charter commission in the immediate future?
It does not. I, I, I think any, the, the mayor, um, and/or any member of the city council can always request an agenda item at any public meeting, calling for any ordinance, um, you know, that they deem is needed, necessary, or proper. If the resolution is voted down today, it prevents nobody from calling up or coming to my office and saying, "Mr. City Attorney, go ahead and draft it. I'm going to put it on, uh, the agenda anyway."
Yes, sir. All right, with that information, uh, I'd like to make a brief statement. I am in favor of a five-two map. Has nothing to do with the seat that I currently hold. I do think that it is in the best interest of the citizens of Bossier City. However, like Mr. Darby very eloquently just laid out, I too believe in citizen participation, and that I would like to see, I would like every citizen to have a voice and a say. So, I will be voting in favor of this just to give the citizens the opportunity to let their voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion was defeated. Adopt a resolution to consider reapportionment as required by the nineteen sixty-five Voting Rights Act of the existing City of Bossier City, city council electoral districts as structured in the current existing city charter. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any comments? Do we have any comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Oh, we, we've got. I think that's Mr. Jeter.
Good afternoon, Counsel, and thank you for the opportunity to address this esteemed body. Lee A. Jeter, Senior, four-hundred Columbia Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana. You've casted your vote on, uh, the proposition to move forward with a charter commission, if I'm not mistaken. And on Monday night, we addressed our concerns while we felt the five-two structure diluted the voting strength of minority voters. On Monday night, we heard a young lady speak that she was in favor of the five-two council district because she felt like she did not have any representation, that her previously-elected councilman did not consider her, would not return phone calls, that she felt like she did not have a voice. And I applaud her for making that statement. And the reason that she made this statement is the very reason why we are in support of doing away with the five-two structure. Because we believe that, just like her, there are many citizens across this great city of Bossier that feel like they do not have a voice. They don't have representation that's going to reflect their views or their values and their concerns, and there are issues in their neighborhoods that are not being addressed. There are several things that we need to address in our charter commission, and the five-two is just one of those issues. Anytime you have an elected official that's not representing all of the citizens of their district, regardless of whether they voted for them or not, that is a problem. And we need to make sure that those individuals do not have the right and privilege to serve this great city. And that's why we've been adequate about, in our determination, to ask this council to move away from the current structure that we believe is antiquated and does not allow for opportunity for this body to grow, it does not opportunity for representation of all of the citizens of Bossier. And not only the, the diluting the strength of minority voters, but I believe the more diversity that you have on this council, the greater ideals that you're going to get, the greater it's going to be for our city, the greater opportunity our city is going to have to grow. And that is going to continue to be our position, because we do not believe that we have reached our capacity as a city to grow. So, I thank you for considering it, but as a citizen of this great city of Bossier, and as someone that wore the uniform so that everybody could be, have a seat at the table, everyone could be represented, we're going to continue to fight and push, uh, for a change for our city. Not because of any ethnic or minority group, but because we believe that it is going to be best for this city in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Any other comments from the audience? Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Uh, Phyllis, do we have any announcements?
Yes, sir.
Meeting adjourned.